All right, time is 5:04 PM. We're going to call it over to the committee of the whole agenda meeting on June 13th, 2022. Uh, I do not see any appearances. We have none right now.
I don't have any, Pat. At this meeting, the attorney for litigation is going to be present at the six o'clock meeting, as far as our update. He's not okay.
Okay. Thank you. City clerk and HR updates.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've got a couple changes I'd like to request from the agenda. The first being I'd like to add a communication, and I place it on your desk, number five. It's a memorandum from Joe Rain, of Bolton and Mink. I'm sure he'll review it with you when he appears at this meeting. It's regarding 2021 and 2022 street improvement project, Mini-Ha-Ha School Sewer Service. Next, I'd like to request the addition of consent agenda item number 19, and that's approving the request of the Heritage Days Committee to do a 4K family run, uh, walk during that 2022 Heritage Day celebration. And I put a copy of that application on your desk, and I received approval from the Public Works Director and the Police Department, the Chief of the Police Department on that. Number three, I'd like to remove the minutes, approval of the 5:23 minutes, due to the fact that I don't have the claims and payroll figures, uh, from individuals that does that as, have been all the utmost activities.
What number was that? Sorry.
Um, that is consent agenda item, I think it's number one. Yep.
Just a minute.
Yep. Also, I just wanted to talk a little bit about consent agenda item. Let me see if I can find it. Regarding the street closure, so we requested the closure of the Moonlight Market, um, event, submitted an application for a special event permit, and we got some feedback from one of our employees who, um, would like to see the, um, I guess, street closures approved by the city council, which the code does require that, um, obstructions to the street require council approval. However, when we adopted the policy for the, um, special events permit, and it wasn't really a policy, we, um, we sent that to the committee, and the committee, um, I think the idea and the concept of that, um, permit process was that we didn't need to bring every routine street closure to the council for approval. Things like dance recitals, I mean, the Moonlight event is a recurring thing, it happens several times a year. Um, if the council wants me to do that, I'm happy to do that. If they don't want me to do that, if they, if the council wants to take action on every time there's a street closure for a city band concert, or the other recital, uh, van show, or items such as that, um, then we can, we can keep it the way it is. Otherwise, we can have the attorney, um, draft something to amend, um, the whole language so that, um, we don't have people doing like their, uh, their vibration. Whoever, that was, uh, special, that was.
Is it an actually a company vote that we're closing? And are there other ramifications that could be, when they call you, you can tell me?
Did we, did we ask a question?
I don't know.
Mr. Chair, we actually have an agreement, um, just a big thing at the point, we have an agreement with the company, the goal of the agency limits, we have the ability to maintain globalism, do all this. I do know that exists.
So, just a question, I want, I want clarification on that one, because what I said in those meetings, it was my recollection, that the council wanted to see less of that coming before the council, and also because some of these events come off in a timeframe that doesn't allow us, and it would require a special council meeting, and if it's something that's routine in nature, that would be my suggestion, but again, I don't care, it's up to you guys.
And I recall, I do recall that, uh, I believe we talked about it last summer, or was it last summer or two summers ago, they started, it must have been last summer, uh, when they started doing more of those things that we, uh, because of the time issues, I agree with that. So, I think we had even had that special meeting last year in order to facilitate it.
And one of the requirements on that permit that we approved is that any time a street closure is approved, that seventy-five, so probably the joint-in-class requirements have to sign off on it, so we're requiring that when we approve those. So, I don't know, I'm not sure, unless it would be a security issue, I, I get it.
Go ahead, Counselor Erickson.
Do we need to have action from us again, or do you feel that I can have consent based on, I support that if these are, are, however, I've got it listed on the agenda, excuse me, is that I've got approving this one, and this one, and then I've got requesting the city attorney draw from the staff to do that. So, I just wanted to provide an explanation why this is on here, and how it came about. I appreciate that, I suppose, I've had those conversations in the past, and it's in this, if you have the knowledgeable staff and committees that have worked through these, that they don't need to follow, they don't have to wait.
Go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Chair, just as a point of clarification, several years ago, um, the Two Harbors City Band was informed by the, um, Public Works Department that they could no longer close that street during the regular city band concerts, unless it was, they had somebody from the street department putting those signs up and taking those signs down. Um, so the city band is no longer, does not close that street on a regular basis during the summer months, or their Thursday night concerts.
Well, and it is city staff that's closing the street.
Yep.
The city band just felt that that was, um, like, way too much to ask that the city Public Works Department do that on a regular basis, every Thursday for ten weeks, so they just decided to leave the road open.
Okay. Any other comments on that? Go ahead, Miles.
Yeah, I just, as long as the council has the power, I think it's fine to approve, and then if we, if we find it to be a problem later, as long as we can revoke it. There, I mean, the council still has power on, like, if one got approved and then say, oh, wait, like, this is, I suppose it depends on the size of it, but I guess there is some, I think some good in consistency doing it this way, you know, I mean, like, some have to be approved, some don't, without council approval, that's my main concern.
I think what I was about to ask, it's just routine, yes, all the ones that were in.
Right, right, yeah, I have no problem with that whatsoever, it's, I, because I definitely don't want to see the need of a special meeting, I think that's open stock for an event that would most likely be approved anyways. But, yeah, just, as long as the council still has, like, if one came through, and then something came off, it's the power to revoke it. That's all.
Anybody else have comments on that? What I would say in my direction would be, at least what I get out of it, is, uh, you'd like to leave that to Counselor Erickson. All right? Do you have any other updates?
I think that's it.
Okay.
And, um, just, we were going to also discuss, um, the tall ships, and I have, unless it isn't a parent, so I think, um, we'll discuss that one.
Okay. Um, I'm totally fine taking time for that right now, so long as I don't have to discuss it.
Yeah.
Okay. You're welcome.
We have with us today, Mr. Samborski, sitting back there, yep, there he is. Um, we've, um, known with him last week regarding the tall ships, and specifically about the reimbursement for the city for our cost. Um, those costs were put together by, um, Chief and Assistant Chief Police, and Miranda, who's not here today, Finance Director, kind of massage them, putting together, um, material that we have in your packet. Um, let me see, I'm pretty sure this, this, we should go here. Mr. Oliver, you want to just say a few words about the cost, and we'll have Mr. Samborski explain it, and then you can.
Good evening. Um, I guess in comments as far as tall ships are related, from me and Assistant Chief Anderson, we're fifty-two days away from August 4th. It's always been our intention to plan for a safe and successful festival. There's still a lot of planning to do. Planning has been ongoing since November, and we have been told at the Police Department to plan for it as if it will happen. We've had continual planning and evaluation of our plans. We've kept our community at the forefront as we plan for parking, vehicle, and pedestrian traffic, and public safety in general. We have worked in cooperation with neighboring post-public safety professionals, and have relied upon their experience and past responses to help share or to shape our plans. We knew early on that our staffing needs exceeded our staffing level, um, and we knew that outside law enforcement officers were necessary and were always a part of our plan. Through our processes, Assistant Chief Anderson and I came up with a plan that we felt was ideal and acceptable to us in our community. We at the Two Harbors Police Department have mutual aid agreements, uh, with the police and sheriff's agencies in northeastern Minnesota. It's our intention to utilize these agreements. We did send out an initial heads-up, um, to our mutual aid partners, uh, which was followed up by a formal request, um, for mutual aid. And just to cover, per that mutual aid agreement, anything beyond eight hours of service is, has the title of long-term assistance, where we are responsible for actual costs of any assistance, which includes salaries, overtime materials, supplies, and other necessary expenses. So, like, City Administrator Dine said, um, we did meet with, uh, Mr. Samborski, but I did that on Tuesday, the Tuesday prior to the city meeting with him on Wednesday. And some questions about the reimbursement came up, and I told, uh, Mr. Samborski that that's way above my pay grade, I just plan the public safety side of things, and he asked that, we set up a meeting, which was done. Um, and we met last Wednesday and had a conversation, uh, and the request came to really look at our plan again, and see if there was anything that we could cut from our plan. So, Assistant Chief Anderson and I, um, we were reluctant to make changes, the plan that we had, we felt was ideal, um, but we took another look at things, um, and I think we've made some significant changes, uh, to the plan, and as you can see on maybe Finance Director Piedle's, uh, documents, there's a savings, not a savings, but a reduction in costs of $23,500 related to outside law enforcement, officers, and supplies and equipment. Just to be transparent, um, since that time, uh, figures have come in for emergency management assistance from, uh, St. Louis County, emergency managers who we will need assistance from, as well as some dispatchers on St. Louis County, so those estimates are now in at around $10,000. Those are on the sheet provided by our Finance Director as well. I just want to state that Assistant Chief Anderson and I feel that our new plan, um, still keeps Two Harbors and the overall public safety needs at the forefront of the festival, and it should meet our needs. In your packet, there's, I think, three bullet points to fund this, to not fund it, or to partially fund this. I'd just like to go, I guess, on the record and say that partially funding this for law enforcement is not an option, in my opinion. So, with that, if there's questions, or however we want to do this, we're here.
Go ahead, Counselor Erickson.
I'm sorry, I, I know it's been a long time since we've initially talked about this, and I'm recalling that there was going to be commitment and contribution by the event itself to help cover these costs, and if somebody could please explain where that is, I would really appreciate that, because that was my understanding when we were spoken to, uh, several months ago.
Hi, I'm Craig Samborski of Festival of Sale, and you are correct, we do have an agreement with the city of Two Harbors to reimburse expenses. I do not have a problem with the Police Department's plan, other than to say, I've done twenty-three tall ship festivals, the most expensive one we've had for law enforcement was Tall Ships Philadelphia, $17,000. This bill, two weeks ago, was almost a quarter of a million, it's down to $150,000 now. So, I could do three Tall Ship Los Angeles events, three Tall Ship Philadelphia events, three Tall Ship Duluth events, and it's still, that would still be less than what this number is. So, I don't have an argument with the plan, I just, it is, it would be, um, I've, I've never seen a festival with, with this kind of spending before for, for law enforcement, and it's, we're not in a position to pay that kind of money for it. Um, when I met with, uh, the CAO, and Miranda, and Rick, and Ken last week, I agreed I'd go up to $15,000. So, Duluth has been $10,900 in its biggest year, which would have been 2016, and we have capped our tickets at less than half of what Duluth is. Um, I did get an email from MinDOT on Friday with their suggested traffic plan, and they're asking for four officers for traffic for that, and one, um, I think one that's not covered in their plan is one up by the high school, but I, I don't want to question the Chief and Ken's plan, I just, from a, from a financial perspective, and it, it's just not in the realm of things to pay a hundred, I think we were down to $150,000 last week, is that right?
Yeah, I don't, I don't remember the number, there's so many numbers.
Yeah, it's just, that, that's just not feasible for us. And what I agree to pay for it, I base it on thirty years of experience in this industry, and having done twenty-four tall ship festivals, I reckon, so I, I just, I don't, I don't have a, a, an easy way out, other than, um, I don't know if you want to talk about the, so, one of the ideas that came up to fund this was, um, with all of the tickets we have sold, we have a, a pipeline to all of our customers, and, um, one thing that is true, no matter what, there are going to be people that are going to park on the streets, and that is one thing that the event could help with in terms of marketing on streets, um, non-resident parking permits for the weekend. I think we calculated, we came up with about eighty grand that could go towards law enforcement, the law enforcement bill for that.
Some questions? Any questions? Go ahead, Miles.
I guess, what is the differences of, uh, why are some of these $10,000, and why do we come in at $150,000? Is it the amount of officers, or why is there such a discrepancy between?
I, I think so. I haven't seen Rick or Ken's plan yet to, you know, tell you exactly what it is, but like Duluth, for example, in 2016, um, I use that because that was kind of a record year in terms of attendance, we had a lot of people. There was, um, in totality, there was six officers that worked the event, so that $10,900 was to pay those officers over four days. So, one thing we don't experience, some, some communities, like when I've done this event in Tacoma, Washington, Tacoma said they'll contribute $118,000 worth of city services towards the event, so I never saw a police bill. Some communities will take money from like a tourism budget and offset that, they'll hire extra officers. So, we had that conversation last week, and since then, I talked to the Duluth Police, and the Police in Philly, and the Police in Los Angeles, and I said, so, was there a pool of money from tourism tax or something else that paid for police? And the answer was no. So, all, like, the, I think the invoices that I shared with everybody last week, those were all the police that worked the event.
Do you have something?
Yeah, I guess I'll respond, and I don't want to go back and forth with Mr. Samborski, but my understanding of those, the Duluth, was the six officers that provided, uh, security on Harbor Drive in Duluth. Um, we do have information from Duluth ourselves, um, that they had thirty uniformed officers on the Festival of Sale Day, they had, um, motorbike patrol, so the horses, they had six officers out on bikes, they had homeland security TSA Viper team members, uniformed out in the crowd, tactical response team members included within there. That was on Thursday, the Festival of Sale Day. So, as we've polished our, our plan, um, we keep all of that stuff in mind, um, and I think for the police to hope that nothing bad happens, we're planning on our part, we have to plan for the worst. Um, we've scaled it back, we've reused, um, made significant changes, like I said, it's just ultimately, we're fifty-two days away, and, uh, a lot to do on our side of things to let our neighboring agencies know who've reached out and said, this is who we can, who we can send, this is how many we have to help, so. And then I, I'll follow up with Jim Miles from MinDOT to, to get that email, that doesn't really change anything on our, our side of things, not a lot, I would say.
Okay. Go ahead.
If I could just add one thing, stepping back to the funding solution with doing the non-resident parking, I have no doubt that all those would be sold. So, when we had a meeting a month ago, Rick and I had talked about the idea of selling a non-resident parking permit, and I think you guys had come up with about, was it a total of like thirteen hundred spaces?
Yeah, about six hundred south of Seventh Avenue, six hundred north of Seventh Avenue. Those numbers don't take into account, like the memo says, residential parking. I don't know that there's a way to guarantee, there's ten spots in the 400 block of Third Avenue, I don't know how to guarantee that. There was discussion about residents getting a permit through all of this and being able to put it in a vehicle, certainly unenforceable, I believe, on our part, but it is a way to generate revenue, and, and creative thinking, which I'm, which I'm all about, is.
Yeah, and, and so, I, I guess my, my thought on it is this, is that I don't think there's going to be a problem selling that kind of parking and getting all that money in your hands. I think that's a, it's, it's a big, a big part of the solution to this moving forward is, you know, getting the council to say, yes, we agree to that idea, and then we can help, you know, put the ticketing piece together and whatnot. I think if there isn't some sort of controlled on-street parking, it will be fairly chaotic. If there's not some mechanism that controls it, so that we know that on, you know, whatever Seventh Street, there's a hundred parking spots, it will be a free-for-all if there isn't some mechanism set up, so somebody has to buy a parking permit for the event. And it, for us to put the piece, that piece of it together, a hundred percent of that revenue would go to the city, I can set it up, so there's an audit that goes out every week to Miranda, and I believe every two weeks, the ticketing company releases money, so that would be my, my solution, at least a, a bigger part of it.
Go ahead, Counselor Erickson.
Thank you for that. I'm recalling that these estimates were talked about way back in February, so this isn't a surprise to me that these numbers are close, so I'm, I'm a little unsure of how this is a surprise today in June. I'm interested in knowing, um, what the Chamber, Love and Lake County, and others are contributing to this event, and I think that that should go towards the reimbursement of these costs. I think the council, at least myself, we've talked quite a bit about that we do not want this to be a burden on our taxpayers, um, to have this event, while we appreciate the opportunity, and one of the big challenges we saw right away was that we're a small town versus a Philadelphia, or a Los Angeles, or a Tacoma, Washington, and.
There's Cuse Bay, Oregon, there's Greenport, New York, there's Fairport, Harbor, Ohio.
So, it'd be interesting to see how they were able to manage that, because those are the only references you shared with me tonight, so.
For Sandusky, Ohio, was $2,100.
Yeah, so, I guess, you know, I'm, I think we all want to see some level of success, but I'm, I'm, I'm struggling right now to have this be coming to, at the end of June, knowing that this event is fifty-two days away, fifty-one, fifty-two.
If I could, I just heard two, two Thursdays ago, the estimate, I had not heard an estimate before, two weeks ago.
Um, I think this has been available to us for quite some time, we've talked through it, generally speaking, and so I, I, I am, I'm sorry that these communications maybe were in a different place, and I know there were, uh, different structures of how this event was going to be managed and changed over time. I guess I'm, I'm struggling, I appreciate the parking concept, but, um, without knowing what it is we're actually obligating and paying for, um, this is a hard one for me, but we need to move forward, because this is happening in fifty-two days, and, um, I'm just struggling, but I'd really like to hear more, or if there's information related to what other contributors are putting towards this event, so we can understand how this is truly being funded.
Derek, did you have something to add?
Yeah, this is great, too, so I, I took a look at my notes from the Public Works, or Public Safety Committee meeting back in December, and there was a $12,000 overtime cost from the Police Department, and a $40,000, uh, Police Department budget cost, so that's $52,000. I'm not quite sure, uh, whether that just omitted any of the outside law enforcement or any charges or not, but, uh, that was a, understandably, in December, it was a wrong test.
Rick, did you want to comment to that?
Um, just that outside law enforcement has always been a part of our plan, and I believe we shared that at our public safety meetings. I can go back to my notes, but I know these costs, I know our mutual aid agreements that we have in place, and according to them, it's a long-term assistance, it's over eight hours, it's four days' worth, so we're responsible, just like if we were to go and help Carlton County or something, I'm sure that we would want to be reimbursed if we were to send four of our people. Just, yep, just the challenges we have, um, just looking for direction from the council. Um, I can share on our, on our parking plan, um, I won't go into specifics, but we are receiving phone calls at our office about this, that below Seventh Avenue, it, it will require signage, um, but it'll be allowed parking on the south side of most avenues, not a lot of parking on our streets. There are some of the streets where the parking would be allowed, but, um, certainly Sixth Street and Seventh Street, both sides are appropriate, um, but it really allows for emergency vehicles to get around, for all of our visitors, all of our community members to, to get around our community, so.
And how many, um, parking permits for houses would be allowed for home of our residences?
Uh, I don't know. I mean, there's approximately fifteen, sixteen parking spots on each block, each avenue has homes on both sides, you know, and some of them are eliminating parking, so.
Okay. Would there be any kind of a shuttle service? Have you guys discussed that?
Yes.
So, uh, we are engaged, uh, we have a contract with Wager Plus Company to do shuttles for the event, and Arrowhead Transit is also going to do internal shuttles around the city, so if somebody wants to leave the event and go to Castle Danger, they can hop on that shuttle. And designated points for that as well?
Yeah, exactly, and that's something we're paying for, we're paying for both of those shuttles. And so, we would, if the council agrees to do on-street, like, non-resident parking permit, we'll work with the shuttle company, and I'll add the shuttle piece to, whatever the additional expenses for that, I'll, or our company will cover.
Go ahead, Counselor Erickson.
Uh, in response to Counselor Erickson's question, I have contacted Love and Lake County, and they haven't made a commitment, but they'll look into some possibilities for helping in this project. It probably won't be a real significant get-off, but it'll be something. And they're also contacting other, uh, sources as well.
I'm intrigued, have we had a chance to talk to you in the Thursday? I know, um, I think it was mentioned in Sandusky earlier, um, is there an opportunity to talk to somebody and say, hey, what does this look like? Is there an opportunity to talk to somebody and say, hey, what does this look like? I appreciate these numbers. When I look at, like, outside law enforcement costs of eighty-nine thousand, I think, boy, you know, this, this would fund, you know, us getting another officer, that's, that's a lot of money. And so the other thing I would like to see is, this doesn't really give me a serious breakdown, just a spreadsheet saying this is what the numbers are. Be nice to know, you know, what that all includes. Twelve thousand for public works personnel, for example, and things like that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Well, I'm kind of falling more into, I don't want to poke holes in our Chief of Police and Assistant Chief's plan that they've developed and made. That's what we pay them, we're their professionals. And I totally feel like that's, that's a real thing, is that number, it's more along the lines of how, or if we are going to fund that. Go ahead, Councilor Glazer.
So Administrator Diane, you said that Love and Lake County has not committed to any funding of this, has the Lake County Chamber committed any dollars?
I have not talked to the Chamber.
Okay. So as somebody that's put together an event many years ago, that was a big event, not as big as this, I'm sure, this takes a lot of planning, it takes a lot of people to be involved, and unfortunately, I don't think that the City Council has been involved from the beginning of this project. And I do not feel that I would be in favor of putting this burden on our taxpayers. There's been planning that has gone on from different directions, and the city was not involved until the beginning of this year, and I just think that as, as a council, we need to protect the citizens of Two Harbors, which I think Chief Hogenson has put together a good plan. But I also don't know how we can afford this event.
Mr. Chair. I know that Public Safety was being, because I got reports from Public Safety Management in need of this before the end of the year, in fact, I know it was. And what I heard back from those reports is, I think I heard seventy thousand, eighty thousand, and now I'm seeing these numbers, and I'm hearing that this just came out, and I think what we need to do is, is have those conversations with Love and Lake County and the Chamber, and some of these other entities, to make sure before we just go jump into something, I think that would just be really prudent on our part to do that.
All fine and dandy, Mayor, but aren't we kind of like on the, on the five-yard line, and we need to either go or go? We can't, we can't have any more conversations with people. We have fifty-two days. If we don't have the money, we don't have the money.
Well, Mr. Chair, to respond to Councilor Glazer, this just came out. This has been getting worked on for months. Again, Public Safety met Councilor Renwald, the mayor chair, in November. So I think we have to be really careful to say, let's just run at this right now. We've waited this long, let's be true. Let's make sure we have our ducks in a row. I think, the other thing, Mr. Chair, so I'd like to get this right, the other thing that we need to be aware of is, is simply that if you call any of the other cities, and I've had the opportunity to talk to a few different mayors in other cities about this, this has been a big economic, a big economic boom for the city. A lot of sales tax, a lot of revenue, a lot of dollars in. That's why they get so excited about it. It is the safest, best-run event. I had the city administrator tell me that this is the event we dream about, because they have no issues. The people typically are a little older, their family, but the biggest point that was made is this festival runs from ten in the morning to six P.M. In contrast, he said he has a biking event that goes on in the city. They have all kinds of hospital calls, all kinds of fights, all kinds of issues. Same thing with concerts. So these are, these are the kinds of festivals that can really help the business community, which insurance, we know, they, they take in significant amount of taxes for, for our streets and infrastructure, which is obviously a very important thing for this community.
Go ahead, Councilor Erickson.
What, maybe this is for the administrator, do we need to make a decision tonight? I guess I'm, I'm trying to figure out, I mean, in my mind, I'm thinking to myself, okay, so there's the four percent lodging tax that we're collecting, and maybe we have to say that we want all the lodging tax that's going to be generated because of this event to go towards the offsetting cost of this event. I mean, all of our hotels are going to be full for this entire portion of our event, and looking at other ways to look at this, I, I'm, I'm at a loss. These are big numbers. And then I guess my follow-up question is, have, do we have an approved signed event agreement? That was one thing that came up several months ago that was going to be worked on. I never saw it come to the council. That was something that was supposed to come back to us, and all of this would be part of the process to stipulate what expectations were for everyone, a part of this event. That's what I thought was the whole goal when we had those meetings in the past and had some spirited conversation about what that was going to look like, and it appears that we don't have that, and so.
If I could interject, there's been three occasions that the council supported, once, I believe in October, I was not at that meeting, but then again, this year, on two occasions, I can't remember the second occasion, I think it was about the Corps of Engineers permit supporting that, but the first occasion, the council did approve the permit. So, and if I could just interject, one other thing, it's, the ship has sailed. I mean, our company has moved forward based on this council's support for the event, and laid out hundreds of thousands of dollars in deposits now. I mean, we don't have a choice.
I appreciate that, and I'm not suggesting that.
I know, I'm just.
Yep, and I guess what I, what I'm countering is, I also vividly recall me personally saying that what I'm hearing is, we're not moving forward until there's an agreement. We didn't have an agreement that there was going to be one that was going to be built, that we were going to have conversations about that, and that there was commitment by the event to help cover the costs of the city. So those were things that I thought would be pretty well straightforward, and now I feel like now we're at a place where there's a big gap between what the expectations were and what they weren't. So I'm, I'm just feeling very bad that we're in this place. I want to support the event, I hope that you know that, but I also think that it is our obligation as counselors to be looking at what we thought the expectations were going to be, and how these costs were going to get covered, and I have no doubt we can come up with some creative solutions, and I appreciate the ideas you've come up with. But I also think that other partners in this community who have access to sales tax and lodging tax and other funds need to be stepping up to the plate and being a huge contributor to this process as well.
I guess one of my questions, and I don't know who would know this, is, is Love and Lake County the only vehicle that Lake County itself uses towards things like this, or would Lake County potentially have dollars since it's going to benefit the entire county?
Mr. Chair, I think that's a really good question, and it might be an opportunity to ask him. The other thing is, the city of Two Harbors has our, we had a fund some years ago, a convention of visitors bureau, and I believe that still has some dollars, the last time we talked to our city finance director, Pietala, she had mentioned that there, I believe at that time, was sixty thousand dollars available in that fund, so it might be an opportunity as well.
Go ahead. To just, to the mayor's remarks, I did talk to her finance director about that, and she said there's eighteen thousand left in that.
Any other conversation on this?
Thank you. I guess when I look at these numbers, and I've done some research to see how much this event costs other cities, I wonder why ours are so different, but I'm thinking back to some public safety meetings, and I don't know if it was at that point that I saw that an ATV was involved and special riot gear was involved, and I don't know if that's what other towns have done too, or what we think we need, but when we look at miscellaneous equipment and food and beverages being ten thousand dollars, I have to wonder what other things might be in there, that this number doesn't need to be this high. I know it's been worked on, and Chief Hogenson and Administrator Anderson have worked very hard on it, but it seems interesting why the numbers are so different between our city and so many other ones.
Certainly, Councilor Renwald, the gear that you talk about was an overall budget request, and those items were shared with the Public Safety Committee prior to going to, that gear is not included in this number. I guess since we're going back in time, our department was planning for forty thousand people a day, and that's the initial numbers that we were shared. Those numbers have certainly changed over time. They were down to twenty, they were five to seven to ten thousand people. This whole thing has been moving. So our plans, and I won't get into specifics, because I think that could compromise public safety, I'd speak to people individually if they'd like. But those supplies, for the number of visitors we'll have, there'll be medical supplies that we have to purchase. Our department has three AEDs. I know bad things don't happen, bad things like homicides, crazy things, right? Leaning on our partners in Duluth, Lieutenant Chad Nagorski, received very sound advice from him, from him. Don't skimp on your personnel, you're going to be busy, you're going to have a lot of things going on. These people, these officers, I will share, will be coming to our community. I think it is our responsibility, so a portion of that. Mr. Samorski has agreed to buy lunches for all the responding officers that are there, but we do have water, beverages, food costs in that miscellaneous. Most of the dollars go to staffing. That is the staffing plan that I recommend as Chief of Police. Assistant Chief Anderson, many, many hours going over it. As your Chief of Police for this community, those are the numbers that I have put to it. There's no riot gear to be purchased for this. I want to be clear on that, because of where that stems from in conversation. These are needed tools. We've also reached out to our other partnering agencies for other side-by-sides, for other ATVs. The influx of traffic, Mr. Samorski's main concern was, I can't have traffic stalled. There's a lot of discussion on that. We've worked on it, a traffic plan, trying to get people to the lots that he's trying to secure or has secured on our streets with as little interruption as we can. That's what we've done at the Police Department. We've done our homework, we've put in our time. We have more to do, just looking for answers, and we may not have them tonight, so we will continue to plan.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I, one last question on parking, because that's kind of intriguing. Do we have, maybe you said earlier, but do we have any sort of numbers from Mr. Samorski on that kind of level in terms of payroll?
Well, right now, there's about thirty-five hundred spots. But out of that is insurance, and it's actually paying the landowners to, to use their land for parking, which they were told in the beginning they would not be paid. So when our team went back and met with them, negotiated with them, we're paying for that land.
And that's as far as general parking throughout the community?
No, well, like, individual land, like, on Highway Two, the high school, several different landlords, I don't know, I'm not sure how they feel about me bringing their names up in a public setting like this, but I think they were originally told, they were, they were asked to donate their land. We weren't involved in that piece of it. So when we got involved in it, we made them a reasonable offer for use of their land. We're also paying to ensure their land at two million dollars. We're paying for all the shuttle buses for the event. One thing, while I'm speaking, just to interject, Rick and Ken have been great to deal with. The police have been doing a great job, and everybody we've been interfacing with, the city has been really great to work with, so I'm not, I'm not up here trying to shoot holes in his plan at all. The, the numbers that you're seeing from him are the numbers outside the gate of the event. We have four, four supervisors that are doing security inside the event that are off-duty police officers from Duluth for the event.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Miles.
Oh, I guess with time being of the essence, with fifty-two days left, I don't know, did all these other cities have it figured out by now? I mean, there's got to be.
No.
I'd like to, it comes right down to the wire. I mean, I think that's poor planning.
There's so much with festivals that come down to the wire, I wouldn't want to tell you, because you'd be shocked at what happens at the last minute, but that's the nature of the beast, and it's also from COVID, there's so, the timelines are so different than what they used to be.
I could imagine that, I would just, I'd like to, that's what I mean, but within the next couple of weeks here, of course, we all want to work together. I think the goal is a successful event, and I just feel, from, from the city's standpoint, with fifty-two days left, it's really got to get wrapped up here. It's got to be tight within the next couple of weeks, there has to be an agreement, but I reflect on what Councilor Erickson's saying. I've never seen that either, on everybody's duties and the price, and I know there's somewhat of an agreement, but I've never seen it written in front of me. And I, I want the event to happen, but it can't, it's, it has to be beneficial to everybody. They can't put the city in a hard place, or, and you, I understand that too. That's why, I mean, I understand that, and fifty thousand, that's a lot of money. It's, you know, so I think we really need to focus here in the next couple of weeks and, and get some answers, and that, that's just what I would like to see. And yeah, make all those, you know, we got to reach out to the Chamber and anybody, how, how much is each parking permit about?
With, with the round-trip shuttle, it's fifteen dollars.
Okay. Yeah, I just didn't want it to be, I don't know, you know, ridiculous, like, it's to put on an event and then charge, I didn't know what the parking would be, so. Okay. I agree, fifteen dollars is reasonable.
Go ahead, Chair.
Yeah, I'd like to see the total budget. We're looking at expenses here, but we're not, as Mayor mentioned, sales tax revenue, what is the sales tax revenue that is generated for the city directly by the event, the ticket purchases? Previous meeting, there was a vendor licensing fees that added up to a significant revenue also, and if we start looking at revenue with potential from Love and Lake County, can we make the budget neutral for the county, for the city and the county? And I agree with you, I mean, this is a event for Lake County as well. Is Lake County moving to the public space?
Is there any other discussion? I guess we are down to the wire, it seems like to me, and I would encourage that we table that item until the next meeting, and we really look to other contributions from other entities, so that we have a valid number and where we're going from there.
Cool, thank you for your time.
Appreciate it.
I, I feel it's feasible. Like Mr. Samorski said, lots of things come down to the wire, like, you know, things can still be handled in that long time.
Mr. Chair, is there somebody specific that's going to be checked, that's going to be following through with this? Because I think that there's been a lot of people involved, that nobody's really been chairing this event, so to speak, from the council's perspective. I think, I just want to make sure that we're not just saying we're going to go and talk to Love and Lake County, who has hundreds of thousands of dollars, and find out if they're going to be participating. I think we need to find out who's going to be doing that and get answers in, within, before our next meeting, so we have time to discuss. I'd also like to make sure that this is something, if there's an upcoming budget meeting, that, that it's discussed there. I don't know when you guys are meeting again, but I'd like it discussed there, because again, I do not want the taxpayers paying for this event.
Do you have any suggestions of who you'd like to follow through? Administrator Diane, would you be able to sortate that? Thank you. All right, I assume there's no finance director update tonight? Community development final... Community Development Planner update?
Good evening, councilors. So I don't have anything on the agenda for tonight, but there's an item on the agenda that addresses me, so I am going to address that. And I'm going to be brief, but there's a timeline behind this, and I think that the council needs to have all of the information to make an informed decision. So on May thirteenth, the City Hall sent an email to all of the applicable department heads with a special event permit attached for the Moonlight Event. I replied to that the same day, and I let the group know that I had, I let the City Hall, the group, our group of department heads know that they had been in contact with me, and we were working through the vendor stuff. And my only concern was something to do with a health inspector email that I received last year about portable toilets and hand-washing stations. I was the only department head that replied on that email. On May twenty-third, the council approved my request for the Food Truck Friday event. On May twenty-fifth, I sent an email to the downtown business owners, letting them know the details of this event, so they were aware of what was going on, and so they heard the details directly from me. On May twenty-fifth, I received a question from a downtown business owner about the Moonlight Event not being on the council agenda on the twenty-third, but the Food Truck Friday event making the agenda. They were concerned that their first event for the year was scheduled for June seventeenth, but the next council meeting wasn't until June thirteenth. The group had submitted their paperwork more than thirty days prior to the event, as required by our permit. So there are no last-minute permit applications that come in. They're required to submit them thirty days in advance, if it's one thousand people or less, and if they're larger events, I believe it says ninety to a hundred and twenty days. At that point, I realized that that group may have thought that I handled the special event permits, and that I pushed my own agenda item forth in lieu of their event. On May thirty-first, I sent an email to the event organizers, letting them know that the special event permits are handled by the clerk and not me. I indicated that my only role in relation to the special event permits is when the event has vendors. I said that with everything going on, the agenda omission was probably just an oversight, and I told them that I didn't see any reason why the council would not approve this. On June second, a representative from the group sent me an email stating that the clerk told them that the special event permit does not need council approval. The representative, yeah?
I'm sorry, but I'm not going to have any performance, employer performance talk.
Okay, well, I will just skip over this part, and I'll just let you know that there was some confusion inside City Hall. And when it came down to it, we were told that this does not need council approval. There were some emails back and forth, and how do I fit into this? I handle all of the, I handle and issue all of the vendor permits. If an event application includes vendors, I ensure that the vendors are permitted and following city code. The Moonlight Event indicated that there will be vendors. In the, the vendors, if the vendors are going to be obstructing the street for the purpose of selling goods, there needs to be written permission from the council as per city code section seven point zero seven subdivision one. The code doesn't say the administrator, the clerk, or the community development planner, it says the council, hence why I asked for permission for the Food Truck Friday event. This has been the practice ever since I've been here, up until now. If the council doesn't give written permission for street obstruction, I cannot allow a vendor to obstruct the street, and I will not violate the city code. Secondly, I've been getting requests over the last couple of weeks for vendors to set up along First Avenue for the tall ships. So I asked administration via email if the council had approved this special event, and if there was any kind of traffic plan available. The reply I received said that the chief had a traffic plan, and that he was going to submit it for council approval, which seemed odd to me, since I was told this doesn't need council approval. Also, city code section six point four one subdivision three C says that vendors are prohibited from using utilities from public property and right-of-ways. The definition of public property can be found in city code section one point zero two subdivision seven. There's some confusion about the event permit application, because it requires a fifty-dollar utility hookup. It's my understanding that this fifty-dollar fee is not intended to permit people to violate city code, but to allow non-vendors, such as a band playing downtown, or the Rotary Club plugging Christmas lights in at Thomas and Wood Park, so they can pay the fifty dollars to hook up to the city utilities. The definition of a public market stand can be found in city code section six point four one subdivision one A, and this determines who is classified as a vendor or a non-vendor. There was another issue that came up with tall ships involving land use, and that led to a question about whether that transformer that this council approved was going to be used for that. So I emailed Mr. Samorski, and he's been really great about the vendors, and he's let them know that they all need their own power source, except the main vendor needs to hook into the city utilities. And so I had let administration know that, as the current code says, I cannot violate city code, and I will not, and so there has to be another solution to this. The code can be changed at any time by the council, and I'm always in favor of making changes to the sections of the codes that make the processes more defined and efficient for everyone. However, it requires a public hearing, three readings, and a thirty-day wait for these changes to become effective, and we don't have that time for the tall ships. Everyone has an obligation to follow the city code, everyone. And I had some other stuff that I was going to say, but I'm going to leave that out. And then I had one more thing to say.
We're coming up on six o'clock.
Yeah, it's going to be fast, thank you. In February, this council referred city code section two point four zero, the boards and commissions, to Public Affairs Committee for review. I staffed four citizen commissions, the only citizen commissions in Two Harbors, the Planning Commission, Trees and Trails, Public Arts, and Theta. We haven't had a public art meeting since November, and Theta hasn't met since January because we can't get forums. We have two open seats on Planning Commission, three on Theta, three on Public Arts. Trees and Trails is full, and we're thriving, but it is now June, and we have no update, and I have skeleton commissions. Essentially, because these are citizen commissions, the voice of the citizens have been taken away for the last four months and replaced by ad hoc committees consisting of staff and counselors created by the council president. So I'm wondering if there's an update on that, and if not, I am asking that the council request that Public Affairs expedite this process. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Due to time constraints, Joe, is it okay if I move you to write under administrative And it is six P.M.
Mr. Chair, could I, could we add a couple of things that I wanted to bring up at five o'clock, getting to the next agenda?
To the next?
Yeah.
So the six o'clock agenda?
Yeah, could I do that, please?
What would you like to add?
I would like to ask that there be a meeting of the Cable Commission, that we get that on the docket. I know I read a good memo from our current producer over here, and I would just like to get some follow-up as a committee of the whole. And I would also appreciate a meeting of the Waterfront Committee with regards to the property on the waterfront. The committee of the whole.
I just wanted to make that clear.
Yes, both of those are committee of the whole, so I would just like to see if we can fit those into our over...
So would you like me to put that under new business that we define, get us get such, set schedule, date, time?
For both of those commissions, yes, or committees, thank you.
All right. We'll adjourn this meeting and move into the six o'clock meeting. That's all right, everybody? Looking for a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.